Let's go ahead and call this morning's meeting to order on June 10th at 9:00 a.m. Precious, may we please have roll call for this morning's Palm Beach County Planning Commission meeting?
Sarah Pardue.
John Carr.
Here.
Rick Stopek.
Here.
Barbara Roth.
Here.
Dagmar Braas.
Here.
Cara Cap.
Present.
Glenn Gromen.
Here.
Spencer Siegel.
Lori Vineker.
Here.
Kylie Harper Larson.
Marcia Hayden.
Angela Van.
Here.
Edwin Ferguson.
Here.
We have Coram.
Thank you, Precious. May we all stand for the pledge?
Do we have proof of publication?
Yes, Chair, we do.
At this time, may we now take a vote to allow remote participation for those on WebEx due to the extraordinary circumstances related to COVID, the COVID-19 pandemic?
I'll make the motion.
A motion by Board Member Vineker and seconded by Commissioner Roth. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passes. Do we have any postponements on the agenda?
No, Chair, we do not.
All right. At this time, I'd like to take a motion to approve the minutes for the May 13th, 2022 meeting. Motion by Commissioner Pompey, seconded by Commissioner Van. All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Motion passes unanimously. At this time, we will go to our public comments. I have not received any comment cards at this point. All right. I think this will be a very quick meeting today. So as far as my comments, I just want to encourage those who are watching us to make sure that you're registered to vote. If you plan to vote by mail, please contact your supervisor of elections. There are four numbers I want to give really quickly to you. The main supervisor's office is at 240 South Military Trail in West Palm Beach. They can be reached there at 561-656-6200. If you're on the north end of the county, you can go to 3188 PGA Boulevard, Room 2401 in Palm Beach Gardens. That number is 561-624-6555. If you're on the south end of the county, there's an office in Delray at 345 South Congress, Room 103, 561-276-1226. And if you're out on the west end of the county, in the city of Belgrade, 2976 State Road 15 on the second floor, 561-992-1114. We'll now go to a public hearing, so we'll hear from the applicant first on the privately proposed large-scale future land use amendment for Thomas Packing Plant 2, LGA 2022-016. Good morning, Mr. Tumman, and we'll give Mr. Tumman 15 minutes, please. Commissioner Vineker.
Thank you for the 15 minutes, Mr. Ferguson. Good morning, Ken Tumman with Urban Design Studio here to have behalf of Toll Brothers, who's a contract purchaser of this site for Thomas Produce. I'm going to introduce to you a colleague in our office, Tyler Woolsey, who will be doing the presentation. You'll be seeing a lot more Tyler going forward, and our whole team is here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tyler Woolsey, Urban Design Studio, on behalf of the applicant. Thank you for your time this morning. Promise we'll make it quick. We won't drag this out longer than it needs to be. Here this morning to ask you of a request for a future land use change. We are looking to take the Thomas property from the current MLU, future land use, which is a mix of commercial low and LR2, to strictly LR2, future land use designation. In coordination with that, we're also requesting to delete the previous commercial mixed-use plaza conceptual plan and the conditions of approval related to that commercial mixed-use plaza. We do have a concurrent zoning application in progress with the county right now as well. For some context, here's the subject property, long been known as the Thomas Packing Plant. The Thomas property's owned this for almost five decades now. It's right here at the northeast corner of Clintmore Road and State Road 7. I'm sure most of you are familiar with the area. Just looking a little bit closer at the current site conditions, you can see the western half, excuse me, of the site is developed with about 160,000 square foot building that is an active vegetable packing plant. The eastern portion of the site predominantly is row crop production with a small area for loading operations of trucks that you see there at the entrance on Clintmore. Here's another view of the site just from the intersection. You can see the majority of that western half is developed with, you know, a large warehouse, you know, packing plant building. The packing plant operation, as I mentioned, is about 160,000 square feet. Their maximum shift at peak season sees 300 employees working in the packing plant, and during that peak season, they do see 75 or more trucks entering and leaving the site every day. So here is the existing future land use map. The future land use atlas for the county shows the project, or the property, rather, as a mixed land use, commercial and low residential, as I mentioned. This here, you see, is the Verde Commons MUPD. This plan was approved under the existing MLU, future land use. This project here that you see has about 160,000 square feet of retail between commercial retail services, personal services, and office use, as well on the eastern side, there's 150-bed CLF there. What we're asking you today is to take this site from the MLU, future land use, which, as I mentioned, is commercial low and low residential 2. We will be removing the commercial low aspect, and we're looking to go straight low residential LR2, future land use, in order to get two dwelling units per acre on the site. In doing so, that would give us the opportunity to get up to 75 dwelling units based on the acreage. This, what you see here, is the current plan that is in process with the county under our zoning application. We are proposing 70 single-family homes. It's at a density of 1.87 dwelling units per acre, just under the two dwelling units per acre that we're requesting, and the lots will be 76 by 140-foot. So looking at about 4,500 square foot homes here. There's a number of benefits to this request that we're proposing and the residential plan that could come from this approval today. One, it eliminates the packing plant operation and the large truck traffic that you currently see at this site. This is predominantly, you know, residential area, and so the large truck traffic isn't necessarily the most compatible with the vehicular traffic we see. The proposed residential use resulting from this future land use change is far less intense than the currently approved commercial plaza, the mixed-use plaza that is at that site. The traffic will be a substantial reduction. We would see, you know, a significant reduction in the paved surface area of the site. Right now, the approved development plan has over 1,000 surface parking spaces. The proposed plan with 70 single-family homes would have 140 parking spaces in garages and driveways. So, you know, taking a large sea of surface parking and making a residential community out of it. Also, in our proposed plan, one thing that we do is significantly cut back on the access to the adjacent roadways. The approved commercial mixed-use development plan has one access point directly onto State Road 7 and four coming out onto Clintmore. The proposed residential plan eliminates the State Road 7 access entirely and has one main access point onto Clintmore with an accessory, sorry, a secondary emergency access on Clintmore as well. So really, going from one access on State Road 7 and four on Clintmore to one on Clintmore. Also, in going from that commercial mixed use to single-family, we'll be able to create a compatible single-family community that really is, you know, pretty much identical to what you see in that surrounding area, particularly the existing Oaks community to the north of us there. And in doing so, it reduces a lot of the potential for the noise, light, and other types of, you know, concerns that you might have placing a commercial development right up against a residential community. One thing that I will call out, you know, this is always something that is on top of mind when we're talking about development is traffic. The residential project that is proposed here is a substantial reduction, almost a 90% reduction in daily trips from the approved mixed-use development there. So taking the number of daily trips down from almost 6,500 to 700 daily trips. Showing you here, this is a map of the surrounding area with the gross density, net density there as well for the Oaks. You see that the proposed density at 1.87 dwelling units per acre is right in line, really right about the middle of the road there for this area. As we transition from south to north, the density decreases, so the proposed density is a really good transitional point for this area. Speaking of the surrounding area, you know, one thing that we always appreciate as, you know, applicant representatives is when our applicant understands the need for community outreach. Toll Brothers has done a great job and committed early on to community outreach here and has had a number of conversations we've been involved with, with the Oaks community to the north of us, obviously being most concerned with them because we are right up against the Oaks. You see, what you see here is a letter of support from the Oaks HOA. They have been instrumental in the development of the project. You know, we spoke to them very early on when we wanted to, we knew we wanted to go residential, and we worked with them specifically to get to the residential product and design that we have today. So they're very much in support. And we also went and spoke with the West Boca Community Council at the end of April, and we're very happy to receive a supportive vote, seven to one, from their council as well. One thing that I will make mention of, these are the conditions of approval that are included in your staff report. The first condition, restricting the maximum density to 75 dwelling units, we are happy to accept in its entirety. The second condition, requiring 10% workforce housing contribution. The applicant is happy to agree to the 10% requirement. One thing we are asking for is the ability to use the buyout option in order to buy out the workforce housing requirement for this site, and so, you know, we are asking for you to weigh in on that today. And I'll stay here for questions. Thank you very much.
At this time, we'll have the presentation from staff, after which time we'll have public comments, if any, and then afterwards, any questions that the commission may have of the applicant or the staff will handle at that time. Good morning, staff. I was just about to thank you. Also, I'd like the record to reflect that Commissioner Harper Larson has just joined us. Good morning. Good morning, sir. How are you?
Good morning. Bryce Van Horn with the Planning Division. I think I'm going to try and modify my presentation a little bit. The applicant actually covered a lot of what I'm going to go over on the existing conditions and previous approvals, but this is, again, a privately initiated, large-scale, future land use amendment application known as Thomas Packing Plant 2. And again, 37.4-acre site located at the northeast corner of Clintmore Road and State Road 7. It is in the urban suburban tier and bordering the agricultural reserve tier, which is to the north and east, and you see the tier boundary demarcated around the site by the black and white dash line that goes around the site and then north on State Road 7. Again, this is for a proposed change from multiple land use with commercial low and low residential two units per acre, MLU with CL and LR2. The MLU is a mixed-use designation, and then the proposed land use is to only LR2, so retaining the residential LR2 designation. And of course, as Tyler mentioned, deleting all the prior conditions of approval, the land use matrix, and the conceptual master plan that were adopted in the prior MLU ordinance in 2016. And the LR2 designation would allow up to 75 dwelling units in this application. No bonus density above the two units per acre is part of the application proposed by the applicant. The applicant mentioned also the concurrent zoning application, MUPD zoning to RS with 70 single-family home lots on their preliminary subdivision plan. They've already explained the current background. In '81, farm produce packing plant was built. It was much smaller at the time, expanded to about 166,000 square feet. That's on the western portion of the site. The remainder of the site is agricultural storage and row crops. And again, I just wanted to go over the background on the prior amendment. The site was the subject of an amendment in 2016. That resulted in the adoption of the current MLU designation as ordinance 2016-14. That's in Exhibit 1 of the report also. That amendment included a tier change from the agricultural reserve tier to the urban suburban tier, a change from the agricultural reserve, future land use, to the mixed-use MLU designation with commercial low and LR2. The MLU policies at that time required the ordinance to include a land use matrix with minimum and maximum intensities and acreages for the commercial and the residential land use components. And then a number of conditions were included, including a traffic condition, limiting trip generation, equivalent to those you see here for the commercial retail office, the 150-bed congregate living facility or CLF. And regarding the CLF, this was the residential component. MLU's required one of the land uses to be residential. The maximum number of beds was calculated using the density of the LR2 designation, and a condition was included to limit the residential use under the LR2 to only a CLF. And a conceptual master plan, of course, was also required to be adopted in the ordinance depicting the commercial and residential land uses under the MLU and establishing on the plan enhanced setbacks and buffering. This is the conceptual master plan that's in the ordinance currently. This is an MLU-only requirement, and of course, the proposed application is to delete this. The applicant has already gone over the current zoning approval. So just to give you a little bit more detail on the immediate surrounding area, to the south is the 18-acre reserve at Boca Raton Shopping Center. That was approved in 2000 with the commercial low designation, and subsequently a zoning approval as an MUPD, developed currently with 144,000 square feet approximately of commercial and grocery store anchor. And to the east, Symphony Bay. That's a 33-acre planned unit development with MR5 land use. This PUD is developed with 142 single-family homes and at a density of about 4.3 units per acre. And to the south of that is Boca Gardens PUD with an MR5 comprised of 158 acres, 703 units, about the same density as Symphony Bay, 4.5 units per acre. And adjacent to the north in the ag reserve with an AGR designation is the Oaks AGR PUD. Originally approved in 1998, it's one of the first 60-40 AGR PUDs in the ag reserve. The preserve area for this one is elsewhere for this project, and this is the development area. It's comprised of 281 acres with 469 units, single-family homes, and the density is just under 1.7 units per acre, so comparable to the subject site proposed density. And across State Road 7 is an 18-acre county park with some ball fields and facilities. That is a park, future land use designation, and then to the north of that is the Stone Bridge Residential Development. It's not in the ag reserve, that's in the urban suburban tier. It's comprised of 400 acres, 398 single-family homes. That has a LR1 designation, just under one unit per acre. There's also a seven-acre county-owned parcel, which is comprised of some county satellite offices and a sheriff's substation. You see that there in the white outline. And again, the rest of the Oaks to the east and two adjacent parcels, which are also in the ag reserve tier with AGR designations, both are five acres. This one is the Clintmore Animal Hospital. It's a commercial kennel approval. And the one to the north with AGR also, it's not developed but has had agricultural-type uses as a nursery. So staff's review and assessment on the application is that the proposed LR2 designation is consistent with the comprehensive plan, is compatible with the surrounding land uses and existing development. The proposed density is comparable to that of the adjacent residential, and it is consistent with the character of the surrounding area. The amendment is consistent also with Policy 2.4B, which is the policy that requires a transfer of development rights as the mandatory method for increasing density in most cases. The transfer of development rights as the mandatory method of increasing density is not applicable here, as the proposed amendment is not requesting a higher residential category above the LR2 designation. So staff is recommending approval, however, with conditions, with the modification to include conditions as shown in Exhibit 1. And first, no additional density through the bonus density programs to increase density above LR2 was approved with the application or proposed with the application. So the first condition is that there is no further density increases through density bonus programs, just the maximum 75 units based on the LR2 designation. And second, recall that the current ordinance only allows the LR2 to be used to calculate beds for a CLF and not dwelling units for a home. So the deletion of the condition limitation for a CLF effectively increases residential dwelling units development from zero, basically, to 75. So consistent with board direction for sites seeking density increases through the amendment process, and deletion of the condition is through this amendment process. Staff is including a requirement for an increased percentage of units to be provided as workforce housing on-site that figures 10%. And in this case, the project, if approved with 70 units in the zoning application, 10% would be seven workforce housing units. If it's site planned for up to the maximum 75, it would equate to eight. Those are the conditions. They are in Exhibit 1 of the report. And then for public notification, 500-foot notices and interested party notices. We sent that notices to 12 HOAs in the area, also the West Boca Community Council, Alliance of Delray Residential Associations, and staff also hosted a informational meeting on June 1st. One member of the public attended and inquired about workforce housing requirements and the public hearing dates. We have not received any letters, and I think just one phone call I've received inquiring about the site. So again, to conclude, staff's recommendation, again, is for approval with modifications. Those modifications being the staff-proposed conditions as stated in Exhibit 1. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'd like the record to reflect that Commissioner Hayden has joined us via WebEx. Good morning, Commissioner. Also at this time, I'm going to open the question-and-answer session up for the commission. Commissioners Pardue and Hayden, do you have any questions for the applicant or for staff?
Not at this time for Hayden.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Pardue? All right. Hearing nothing from Commissioner Pardue, I'm going to open it up to the in-person members. I saw Commissioner Stopek, then Commissioner Vineker, and if anyone else asks questions, just please let me know. Commissioner Braas and Commissioner Roth, Commissioner Stopek, please.
Thank you, Chair. A quick question for the applicant. Could you go back to the slide in your presentation, which had the proposed layout for the new housing development, how it's going to flat out? Yep, that's the one.
There we are.
So with regards to the entrance position there, is there going to be a break in the median for traffic to flow east and west?
I'm actually, we have our traffic engineer, Chris Hagan, with you. I'm going to get him to answer that question.
Okay, thanks.
Good morning. For the record, Chris Hagan with Kimley Horn Associates at 1920 Wakava Way, West Palm Beach. Yes, and it's a little bit hard to tell, but you can tell that the current driveway that this is closest to is actually, doesn't quite line up with the existing median opening. Part of the proposal, and that's kind of shown in white just to the west of the driveway that's shown on the plan, part of the proposed plan will include this driveway connection being shifted a little bit further east from where the closest current one is today, lining up with the existing median opening, and there would be a left-turn lane serving it. So people, it'll be full access. People can turn left in, right in, and left out, right out. And it aligns with the driveway on the south side of Clintmore Road.
Okay. And what about signal? Any issue for that?
So typically, with the land use plan amendment, we don't get into that. That might come, discussion about that might come about more later during the site plan approval process, but typically, as you saw, it's a significant reduction in traffic, and when you look at the trip generation for 70 homes, it's not enough to generate the necessary warrant criteria for a signal to be installed.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Vineker.
Thank you. Well, fraction number of trips, fraction of number of access points, and the concerns that people had back in 2015 with the, when the agricultural reserve roundtables occurred, the concern was about the access point on 441, and that's good that that would be removed. My question, I have a question of staff and a question of the applicant. With staff, with the seven workforce housing units, these homes are going to be running between $2 and $3 million a home. So how would this workforce housing be brought into the association without looking completely different? I don't think that they could build $2 to $3 million homes for the price of a workforce housing unit. So staff, how do you envision this?
So we have seen other amendments where they have done it on-site, but not within the, you could call the main product type of the unit. So I think Windsong Estates is an example on State Road 7, where they did a portion of their workforce housing obligation on-site, but it's in the form of townhomes, and then the remainder of that development is single-family. As Bryce mentioned, per board direction, there is always a recommendation from staff when there is a future land use amendment for single-family proposals such as this for 10%, townhome is 20%, and then multifamily projects 25%, always to be recommended on-site. That isn't codified, so, you know, sometimes the Board of County Commissioners, based on a certain type of proposal, will, you know, go a different method and allow for the other disposition methods, but staff does always recommend that percentage on.
It would appear that there would be, need to be another access point if there was another, separate community, basically, of seven homes. I don't know how that would work into their one entrance and exit, but, you know, that's, it is just a little strange there. My question to the applicant is, would you, instead of buying, wanting to buy out, would you be able to build these seven homes elsewhere?
Yes.
Do you need workforce housing?
Absolutely. I do want to say to your first point, I think Ken wants to say something too. You know, it's not often that we get to get up here and ask you for such a substantial reduction. That's why I made Ken let me present today. But in terms of your question specifically, you know, it does, currently, the applicant does not have other projects right now in the county that they're working on, that they could, you know, easily place that workforce housing. There's always an opportunity to try and find that path. You know, unfortunately, that is fairly complicated in order for them to try and find other developers and other sites to do that. You know, at this point, we are requesting to use the buyout option in order to provide those funds for the county to be able to construct workforce housing units.
Okay, I understand it may be difficult to find a plot of land between now and August 31st or September 1st, whenever this is. August 31st or September 1st, whenever this is going to be heard. Okay? That's my question. I'll hold my, uh, discussion for later. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Braz.
Um, I just want to say bravo for, uh, using a piece of property in a much manner, better manner than what it was proposed for, um, originally and, and, uh, I'd like to actually thank the whole brothers for, uh, making this work. Um, the thing is, you guys kept saying 10% as far as the workforce housing, and in our backup material, it said, uh, three to five units, which is five to 7%. Um, I just, it's not a big deal. But, uh, my point is, there is no way that they can do workforce housing on this parcel of property. I mean, I'm sure these homes are going to start, pfft, $3 million. There's places where workforce housing is appropriate, and then there's places where it's just not going to work. Um, I would hope that, uh, this commission would support the fact that this is not going to work on this parcel of property. Um, they should have, um, they should participate in the buyout program, of course, um, elsewhere. Um, I don't know if the county has even done anything yet with the units, um, that have been, um, contributed towards in order for us, for the county, um, to construct these workforce housings. But I'm not sure about a motion, um, as far as approving the product with the deletion of the condition of the required onsite workforce housing.
Well, we'll get to the motions, um, to approve or reject this, uh, once all the other commissioners have had a chance to ask questions of staff and of, of the applicant. So Commissioner Braz, do you have a question for the applicant or for staff?
No.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Roth, then Commissioner Van.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, my question, very much in line with, uh, Commissioner Vinecor's, uh, was, I was going to use the word, how, how did staff envision, uh, in all the years that I've attended, uh, the workforce housing meetings and summits, uh, one of the things I've been sensitive to was, uh, the desire to not have, uh, a product that looked different, uh, in a community, uh, that product being workforce housing. When, um, planning director, when you mentioned the other product where they had put townhomes in, what was the total number on that, um, project? Do you have that available? I, I believe, was it larger than this?
It, yes, it was larger than this. I, I can find that out fairly quickly, but it was over 100.
Yeah, um, you know, in this case, we're talking about seven units and whether it's feasible and, and how to locate and place onsite, um, seven townhomes, I, I, you know, all of these things come into question of, I, I thought that, that other project was larger. That's my concern. I particularly like the reference, um, both by staff and by the applicant, that this is compatible with the surrounding communities, um, as to density. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate the outreach that the applicant has done. Thank you.
Commissioner Van.
Just an observation, um, I understand, because in my development, while living, actually in, on incorporated Palm Beach County, all workforce housing units, they look the same. I have one on just next door to me, and then, if you didn't know it, I know it, but if you didn't know it, you wouldn't, actually, it's on both sides of me. Uh, but my problem I have, and I guess it's more of, of, of developers coming in, and generally, they make these homes million, one, two million, they making their, they're, they're making their 25% profit or 30% profit, and then we get money put into a fund. In my observation, and I could be wrong, and staff could correct me, where is the, not townhome, where is workforce housing being built in terms out of their fund? Is it funding projects to build apartments? Is it funding projects to build more actual homes for the workforce in Palm Beach County? That's the problem we're having with that. I mean, I understand, I, I don't disagree that nobody's going to be able to afford a home in these developments. I mean, my development was built 20 years ago, 20, 25 years ago, but the question is, when you buy into the fund, the money goes into the fund, is it for assistance? Is it for actually to construct homes? Since I've been on this board, I've, I've known personally one project that's building, uh, townhomes in West Palm Beach that was for a project out west. But again, what is the county getting when they buying out, buying out, buying out? What are they getting? Are we getting physical housing stock that's so desperately needed in Palm Beach County? Or are we just getting money put into a fund that's doing assistance for, you know, uh, rent assistance or something like that? I mean, it's more, uh, more of a general question, but I, I do understand, but we get into a point in the county where these developers are coming in time and time again, housing stock is, and no land prices are high, I'm not, not doubting that part of it, but nobody's really focusing on the workforce housing stock. They buying out, buying out, but we're not getting that stock placed somewhere in Palm Beach County. So I'm not saying I have to answer, but it's just the fact that I agree with staff and try to make them do it. Yeah, maybe impossible because based on given the land costs, given what they're going to build these for, and they would have to take a hit in what they are making their profit, may not be 30, but 25%. But I, I, it's just a more of an observation. But could you ask one question I have is, where are in the county, is the, are we building, are the county building more workforce housing based on developers paying into the fund? Are there any?
So what I don't want to do is, you know, misspeak off the cuff, so what I've, I've made a note to myself to provide a more detailed summary at the next meeting, but to more generally answer your question, the last time I checked are, we have a, a database of, of the units. Um, I believe it's, some are under construction and obligated, not yet built, but I think it's at 2,700 of those over, I believe over 1,500 are actually built. There are also, uh, payment assistance type programs, but there are a number of units that are built, occupied, um, in our, in our, you know, program today. But I will do a little more research and come back with more specifics, um, at the next planning commission hearing.
Thank you.
Um, and also just to clarify something I misspoke, um, the project you asked about, Ms. Roth, it wa, it's 93 units. So it is larger, but I think I said it was over 100, but it's 93.
I'll entertain a motion to either approve or deny this, this applicant.
I'll, I'll make a motion if you like. Okay. I'll motion to approve the application and, and eliminate the requirement of building the units onsite and allowing the, the buyout. Or, or possibly, uh, building offsite.
Motion has been seconded by Commissioner Braz. Is there any question or any unreadiness on behalf of the board?
I have comment, a comment on, this discussion time, right?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this is a residential corridor for sure. From Atlantic down to Clintmore Road, it is residential. It looks very similar to Lyons, only the road is a little larger. So, uh, it's, it's very good that this is, uh, they're considering residential. We would not want to see this back at commercial. And I remember six years ago, when this came up to remove it from the agricultural reserve, the neighbors were really very, very upset, the Oaks were, they, there, there was just so much, so many people in the audience opposed to it. And you see, now you get this letter from the adjacent community. So I think that's really good, and, uh, that's why I'm supporting this.
Any, there's some questions or comments by the board before we take this to a vote?
Can I, uh, I just would like to clarify what the motion is.
Yes.
So it's a motion to, um, recommend, uh, approval, and then we're going to modify the workforce housing condition to eliminate onsite and allow them to either buy, use the in-lu option or the offsite option. Is that correct?
That is the motion.
Okay. Exchange, right.
All right, press, may we have the roll call vote, please?
John Carr?
Yes.
Barbara Roth?
Yes.
Lori Vinecor?
Yes.
Penny Pompey?
Yes.
Dagmar Braz?
Yes.
Sarah Pardue?
Yes.
Kylie Harper Larson?
Yes.
Angela Van?
Yes.
Marcia Hayden?
Yes.
Rick Stopek?
Yes.
Edwin Ferguson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Thank you for your time, Planning Commission.
Seven, eight, nine, 11 is zero.
All right, now we'll.
Can I have, excuse me, can, can I ask a question?
Of who?
Of the staff.
In regard to the?
To the workforce housing purchase versus built?
Um, I mean, there's no real motion on the floor, but sure, Commissioner, go ahead.
Um, you said that there were 2,700 units where developers contributed money to a fund to build workforce housing.
Sorry if I wasn't clear when I said that number. That, that's the total, it includes some that are not yet built, but are obligated, but not all that were through the in-lu. Those are some that were built onsite as part of their obligation. That's why I want to do a little more research and then provide you all with more specifics, but that's not, I didn't mean or intend to say that that was all units, um, built through in-lu payments.
Yeah, I, I would just really like to be perfectly clear on the monies that have been contributed to this pot for workforce housing, and I believe the county is responsible for building these units, correct?
So that is what I want to, again, not misspeak today and come back and provide more information at our next planning commission.
I will be patient, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right, at this time, we'll, we'll turn to the remainder, remainder of the commission. If you have any questions, Commissioner Kylie Harper Larson, Commissioner Stopek, Commissioner Van, Commissioner Vinecor, Commissioner, Commissioner Roth?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
No, thanks.
Commissioner Pompey?
No.
Commissioner Pardue?
Nothing.
Commissioner Hayden?
Nothing.
Commissioner Braz?
No.
All right. Um, my only point is, I think, I think the meetings are, are getting a little more streamlined, so I appreciate you, you all's indulgence of the, um, request that I'm making to you to make sure that we're posing questions only to the applicant and staff, and then once we have a motion on the floor, we can debate, if you will, comment as much as we want. Um, this was a single item agenda today, so, you know, obviously, we, we're still getting out here at a reasonable time, but my concern is always to those more packed, uh, agendas, where we're having three and four, uh, hotly contested items. The kind of, uh, extra communication outside of the actual motion, I think, kind of makes things much more arduous for all of us. So please try to adhere to the request that we only ask questions of the staff and chair, the staff and staff and the applicant, and then once we have a motion on the floor, are there any, um, comments that you want to make in regard to what the county has done historically in the urban suburban or the ag reserve, or in regard to, it might be the application is coming back up for a second or third time? I think that's the appropriate time to have those, have those comments. But again, I thank you all for, for your indulgence. Um, and at this time, I'll turn to the, uh, Deputy Planning, Zoning and PZMB Deputy Director. Do you have any comments?
No comments, thank you.
Any comments from the Assistant County Attorney?
No comments.
Any comments from Mr. Director?
Just, just one comment, um, that there will not be a July Planning Commission meeting.
Okay.
You get a month off.
All right. All right. On that note, motion to adjourn? All right, have a great day, everybody. Be safe.